Dr. Wong Green is going to give us our overall budget presentation. Everyone, um... Everyone's welcome today. We will not be taking... If anyone's waiting for a vote, I mentioned this in the pre-session. We're not bugging on the budget tonight. This is a presentation program tonight. We will have a public hearing in our next meeting. The third meeting, we'll have our vote. So everyone's welcome. And thank you for being here tonight and hearing this important presentation. Dr. Green?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you. I really appreciate being able to stand here and bringing the 2017 fiscal year budget. I almost feel like I could say duh on a lot of these things because we do that and some of the same issues in terms of how we're responding. But we'll go through and talk about how we put our budget together. We have guiding principles that we use every time we put a budget together and every time we think about a decision. Basically, we focus on our core services and our priorities, which are education, public safety, and human services. Those are our key services. We always look at how we can realign existing resources to meet our priority needs, and we maintain our long-term comprehensive planning focus. Let's talk about what we do. Other times, you've seen this slide to see what is the state, the county, and the state doing. Well, I wanted to focus a little differently this year. If you look at the blue and you see all those services are listed, we provide those services countywide regardless of... There is a little crossover where we all pretty much do our building code enforcement alike, and the state participates with us on education and social services. And some of that's money that flows through the federal government. But basically, if you look in that blue section, we're providing that countywide. No municipality provides those services. So we are bringing you tonight a balanced budget that holds a tax rate of 60.4 cents, maintains our AAA bond rating, and with the factors that we have in this budget, should continue to maintain that. And we believe that it's really important that we keep in mind the people that we serve and that pay for our services as we look through the entire budget progress. Our budget that we're bringing you tonight is a total of $407,169,686. That consists of both the general fund at 320.3 million and our non-general fund at 86.8. Now, non-general fund accounts are paid for with these, really specialized and specific revenues, restricted revenues really. And those include solid waste, our insurance fund, our air quality fund, our fire districts, our occupancy tax fund, which we manage, we collect for the TDA, and our 9/11 funds. We do focus, though, on the general fund because that's where most of our property, that's where our home tax is used. And we really want to acknowledge that all of our revenues come from our citizens. This is a decrease from our amended budget. Amended is a very important word here because we've had a lot of things happen in the course of '16 that I'm going to talk about. But bringing it in at a pretty... Bringing it in at the existing rate was a lot of work this year for many people. So where do we get our money? If you look at our major funding sources, which are property tax, intergovernmental revenue, and sales tax, that is 84.5% of our total revenues. North Carolina counties have a very limited revenue stream. We're not a home rule state, so we can only use the revenue streams that we've been authorized through the general statutes to use. And some of those are fixed in nature. Sales tax, you can't levy a sales tax, and you can only use the sales tax the state specified. So there are some restrictions inside what we're actually authorized to do. But if you look, a significant portion of our revenue comes from those three streams. Of course, one that's really important to us is the property tax. And with... When... Our collection rate is really good, and it's critical that it be good. Our tax department, which is led by Gary Roberts, consistently has one of the best tax collection rates in the state. And last year, we were at 99.7%. If Gary were in here, he'd say 91. It's 99.72%. But he is consistently one of the highest in the state. If you look, we're a large county, and so the blue box are the county collection rates for the counties with population above 100,000. And then the red is the average for all counties in the state. One of the other funding sources that we do use in our... To balance our budget is fund balance. This year in '16, the McRae-Ronan incarceration case has really impacted our '16 results. I will tell you that late... Well, not too late, in '15, we got into the spring, and we knew that this case was coming. We knew that it was most likely going to be something we had to settle. So we just sent out a notice to everybody, said we've got to save some money. So for the first time in many years, not only were we able to save the fund balance we appropriated, we were able to save an additional $4.4 million, which has a significant impact on our overall fund balance. So while in '16, we're projecting losing $4.8 million, the $4.4 that we saved last year really gives us a good impact on the fund balance. We've been able to minimize it, but it took a lot of work over a two-year period to do that. And so in the '17 budget, we have included a $5.6 million appropriation of fund balance. Let's talk about where this money goes now that we have it. In your package, you will have the spreadsheet that is included, I think, the third item on the agenda. And it clarifies the nature of our services and the types of services that are within that function. Now, within that function, there's nothing that says everything in public safety is managed by one person. There's five or six directors in each of these functions. We had that question raised, but I just wanted to clarify that where it sits in a function is just so the public understands the type of service that we provide. If you look at our services, our core services of human service, education, and public safety, that represents 88.29% of our expenditures. And these are for our very basic core services. About 8% of our budget isn't core, but it includes services like libraries, parks, and recreations that are really very heavily used by our citizens. So we have very little discretion in our budget. There is one thing I want to point out that doesn't show on the chart per se, but also in your list of attachments, you have two sheets on community funding requests. This year, we took a little different approach on those. We went through each of the funding... Each of the requests and decided, is this a service that really supports a county service? And if so, we have listed those as community development funds under contract that we would like to place inside departments for the departments to manage going forward and make sure we're getting the service that we need to buy from them. And the other list is community development grants. And these are monies that we have put into the community or requests by the community that don't necessarily complement our programs, but are enhancements to our community. We put in the budget, no, $2.5 million, which is equal to the funding that we have in the 2016 budget. We did that as a placeholder because we will wait for further feedback input from you. We want to see how you'd like to shift the funding amounts on both the contract and the grant list. So those are things we'll need to hear about in probably about seven to 10 days. If you look at top of expenditures, 91% of our expenditures fall into salary benefits at 39%, operating at 16%, and program support at 36%. Program support are monies that basically flow through the county. We don't do the program ourselves, the contract for it, or we're required to provide it. Biggest one of those is education. But we also have economic development, public assistance programs like Medicaid, transportation, childcare services, foster care, especially assistance for adults. So those are just a sampling of what's in the program support. And if you look at this chart, it gives you dollars to go with that. Our salary and benefits in our $407 million budget are $125 million. Our operating is at $51.8 million, and our program support is $114.6 million. I will say, we work really hard to find the best way to provide services. So we use smart partnerships whenever and wherever we can. And our employee count is today lower than it was 10 years ago. Even though we get a lot of pressure from the federal and state government that we have to use merit of government employees in some areas, we still have been able to hold our employment level down and accomplish a tremendous amount of services. Okay, so let's talk now for... You've heard from our three units of education, so we'll talk a little bit about what we need to do going forward with those. At this point in the budget, what we have included is Article 40 and 42 sales tax. That's very restricted. You know, there are a lot of different types of sales tax. These are very restricted sales tax that are used by K-12 for certain types of equipment, and they have some guidelines on how they use them. They're restricted monies that have to flow to them on an ABM basis, and those we've already included in the budget because of the requirements. ABTAC, we have worked with Dr. King, and we're able to take the difference in what he requested last year and what he's requesting this year because it is for building maintenance. We're able to take that out of the sales tax fund. We calculated in for new square footage, some maintenance costs, and we'll be able to adjust the budget to his request. We have gone through the details of that. Dr. Baldwin shared with you the capital needs that she has, and I will discuss those a little bit later, but would tell you that the repairs that we need at Asheville High with the roof problems and the other issues that they had to prevent further damage are going to be around $25 million. If you look at our total investment in education, before we actually start to budget any of the operating requests, we invest about $112 million between capital and operating cost. Dr. Todd Baldwin shared with us some information about several requests, and he and I have talked, and I'm going to make some recommendations and then want to take some additional steps. But before we start, I do want to tell you that as we've waited through the presentations a little after 5:00 today, we understand that we will see the Senate budget go online tonight. It'll go to the floor on Thursday, and we expect the third vote on Friday, which means we'll go to conference probably next week. But at least we'll have a really good idea of what the differences are between the House and the Senate budget. I do think that we have to include the million... The $1.55 million to open the INCA facility and do the additional program at the Nesbit Discovery Academy. So I will be including that going forward in the budget. We talked today, and we would like to wait till we see some final state numbers before we actually decide how much to put in for the teachers increases because we don't know what the state will really do. But we... It appears we will have plenty of notice on that if we're going to see the budget tonight and see an adoption this week. In my discussions with Dr. Baldwin, I wanted to meet with him to do two or three things. I need, just to gain a better understanding of the impact that charter schools are having on our units of education. We've seen the shift to charter schools almost double in the last couple of years. And it's about $3.6 million in the county school budget and a proportionate share in the city school budget. I need to understand that a whole lot better so that not only can we look at the impact issue, but we can do some predicting for the future and can keep you very informed about what that's going to do as we see that shift in take place. And he and I agree that we can sit down and bring me up to speed. And we would also like to work out a plan so that we can give you some options to phase in any increases in the supplements. It would be a very big hit in one year, but I think we can come up with some plans that give you some options for a phase in. That way, we can do planning over the next two or three years. So that's where we stand on education. But we will have additional costs in our budget for education. That's why at this point in time, we have a modest fund balance appropriation. Okay, so let's move on to human services, which includes social service, public health, mental health, and aging services, among many others. And this is the slide that I could tell you, I could almost mimic what you've heard. I'm not going to read you the slide, but want to point out that we are seeing more and more changes at the federal and state level. Individually, some of these may not seem like much, but collectively, it can get to be a fairly large number. The federal and state changes not only are impacting our increased costs and reductions in revenues, but they are also raising some levels and some questions around performance requirements. The General Assembly is very focused on paying for performance and penalizing for failure of performance. We do very... Thanks to Ms. Stone and her staff, we did very well with performance. We... In fact, the state auditor visited a couple of weeks ago to see how we do it and how we're able to stay consistently that high. So my hat's off to our social service staff. They do a really good job. One of the things that we do that a lot of other counties don't do, and they're trying to figure out how we do this, is we measure any minute of the day. We can tell you exactly what's... Everybody's key, how we're doing for the day, what the measures are for that moment at that time. And we watch that every day, all day long, and we make sure that we know where we stand unless we were at 100% compliance. So that's not an accident. We work very diligently with that. Just so you can see where our services are used, this is very hard to read, but you can see it in your package. This is a slide that just shares with you where our services were most heavily used. And I wanted to bring just a couple of slides. What we are seeing is a further and further erosion of federal and state participation in some of our programs. So the bigger that blue box gets going to the right, the more they are pushing to us to fund. So if you look at public health, in 2012, our cost was 55.7% of the operation. And today, they're 68%. So that doesn't seem like a lot to all of us that you see it in the graph. Another one we want to take a look at is child welfare funding trends. It's gone from our costing 52 to our costing 72%. Okay. Let's talk about public safety for a minute. This is everything from our patrol investigation, our detention center, our emergency services, permits and inspections, and our general services, and somebody to have for the district attorney. We do have a few new costs in this, some vehicle replacement of $100,000 in this budget. We have a detention kitchen remodel. It's hard to believe, but that first tower of the jail is 21 years old. It's been in operation that long. It is the only kitchen, and it serves both towers. So at 21 years, when you're running as many people as we do through the detention center and averaging a population somewhere 400 or 500, depending on the years, the kitchen really takes a serious amount of work. We also are changing how we're handling some of our animal services, going to resource officers. Whoops, should not have done that. Okay, now, okay. Which this $150,000 includes some equipment and some contacted services, Asheville Human Rights Society. The firing range will be open this year, and the cost of operating and the personnel for the firing range is $436,000. So these are new items in the '17 budget. In culture and recreation, that's... This is our... Really kind of our optional services. They're not required, they're not core services, but it's heavily used, whether it's our libraries or our parks. Culture and recreation does include a $55,000 increase that will be recurring to keep our pools resurfaced. We have a lot of pools and given their age, it's almost the point of having to resurface one every year. We also submitted, as Dr. Baldwin was saying, we submitted six applications to TDA for funding. They include a partnership with Riverdale, one with Black Mountain, two the Support and Connect request, and two the Support INCA Connect request, and one for Lake Julian. So we do have some applications that... In fact, we just signed the papers on those a few moments ago. Economic development is next. There's not a lot of change inside the services that are provided under this area, but there is been one big change that took place in December of last year. Session Law 2015-277 now requires that we have public hearings on all our appropriations for economic development. We've always done that when we're going to do incentives. We'll come in and do a public hearing and ask you for the incentive. But now, regardless of what you're spending the money on, we have to have a public hearing on that, and that includes what we pay to contract with the Chang Room. We're going through the community development list to see if any of those qualify, and we will hold that public hearing on June 21st before you adopt the budget. The other function is general government, which includes our registered deeds, our tax department, our board of elections. But you'll see registered deeds. Anytime the economy turns and houses stop turning, you see a lot of revenue increase in the registered deeds, and we've seen some revenue increases there. The other two things that are increases in this budget is $158,000 for the tax revaluation. Expect that will be a one-time cost, not a recurring one. The other is $424,000 for our elections. This is a general election, so we don't have a revenue source to offset the cost. In the municipal years, we do. So this cost is for stacking, equipment, printing, and basic supplies. We do have a new requirement that in every precinct on election day, we have six employees. Whether we needed them or not, it's a new board of election requirement that we have six employees at the precinct. You've heard a lot about the buildings that we finished in the course of the year, and I'll just revisit some of those pretty quickly. Dr. King was telling you about the Allen Health Building. It's a 130,000-square-foot building. It opened just a few months ago and really changes the face as you enter ABTAC. The new Mission ABTAC Conference Center that you mentioned is 28,000-square-foot multipurpose building, and it opened right at the same time as Allied Health. It'll seat about 800 people, and they did get a $1 million naming bonus from the Mission Health System that they'll pay over five years. And then the thing that got the increase in the ratings is the 650-space parking deck at ABTAC. It's absolutely been one of the most popular buildings over there. Also have a 30,000-square-foot classroom facility that's located at the Public Safety Training Facility. All of the public safety training for ABTAC is now located at this complex. Public Safety Training Facility is really very heavily used. In '15, calendar year '15, we had 10,644 students use the facility. We provided 4,486 classroom hours at that facility and over 71,000 hours of training was provided at the facility. That's a complex that's heavily used in a year's time. And going back to Dr. Pam Baldwin, we have Isaac Dixon opening this fall as a 75,000-square-foot facility that's replacing a 1950s building. And the Asheville Middle School is a 177,000-square-foot facility that will open in the fall. And Dr. Baldwin talked about the demolition and that they really do want to work hard to try to get that started this summer at my discussions with Mr. Israel so that we don't have constant demolition during the course of the students coming back to school. INCA Intermediate will open this fall. It's a 113,000-square-foot facility, basically right at San Antonio, it's artist's roads at INCA. And Dr. Baldwin did a great job of describing that. Projects that are in progress include the Human Service Complex down on Cox Avenue. It's starting with a 654-space parking deck that's now under construction. Last Thursday, they started pouring on the third floor of the seven-story building. So it's... We expect that we will be able to park in the fall in this building. We had to build the deck first simply because of the lay of the land. It's very landlocked. And once the building... The deck is done, we will move on with the 70,000-square-foot office facility to go with the building. Other thing that's under construction is a firing range that's being added to the Public Safety Training Facility. It's 12 planes, 50 meter, and it will open this fall. So if you look at the capital assets that we have that we need to... That we deal with, and these are the ones that actually had to be titled us over time. We have been pretty aggressive about replacing and renovating older buildings. Still a few out there that we need to work on, and you've heard about a couple of those. But our capital investment at this point is $1.15 billion. So if you look at what drives our debt, our debt by function is 54% education, 21% public safety, 13% human service, and economic development is the other big block in the yield. But basically, our support... Our core services, excuse me, are represent 88% of our debt.
Sorry. Does this include the... What's coming online in the... Debt include what's coming online in the schools? Is that in here?
Yes, sir.
What about the HHS bill?
It does.
Okay.
We're pretty aggressive about our repayment plans, and we like... The bond rating agency in particular likes us to pay these off pretty quick. So in the next 10 years, we'll pay down 64% of that debt. And you can see the... This is the line we like to see when we're paying off the debt, and that's where you get capacity if you have other things you have to do or find yourself in a real bind. Our debt is not like a home mortgage when it comes to actual structure of the debt. Most of the time, they like for us to pay even principal payments. If you look at your home mortgage amortization schedule, the payment is flat for the period. But at first, you're paying a lot more interest and a lot less principal, and you get to the end, and you're paying more principal and less interest. We have to pay an even amount of principal. So our payments are higher in the beginning because we're paying down principal at a really regular level. And so that's one way we're able to pay this off a lot more quickly. Every year, the debt on each issue, the payment, for the most part, starts to go down. There's a few other that we have fixed payment level. So we take a look at our debt. 89.1% of our debt is under 4% fixed. The remaining, almost 11%, is basically taxable bonds, and we have issued for a variety of reasons, and most of those come with revenue streams. If you look at our debt asset ratio, it is very strong, and this is a key measure that the rating agencies use. And here's Commissioner... Chairman Gans' budget slide. We've paid off a lot of our mortgage in the last year. It's like having a $63,000 mortgage on a $200,000 house is where we stand today. Anything you'd like to ask on the budget before I go on to the things we need to worry Okay. There are a couple Senate bills that are moving that we need to talk about because they affect us in different ways. Some are a challenge and some are an opportunity. The first is Senate Bill 846. That's a busy slide, and I'm sorry for that, but it readdresses sales tax redistribution, and it ties it to some unusual things. There used to be five tiers from an economic development standpoint based on the considered wealth of your county. We were a fifth-tier county. They leveled that to three tiers. We're now a three-tier county. That tier is important because as they change sales tax redistribution, what they are saying is the factor that they used to allocate Article 40 sales tax for us used to be 1.06. So when they calculated what our capital was, they applied this factor to it, and we get that much... We get that amount of money. Our factor, if this passes, will drop to 1.9. And that, meaning a $1.4 million loss in sales tax revenue to both counties. If it passes, that's effective in the '18 budget, not the '17 budget, but it is one we're watching very closely. The second part of 846 goes back to the expansion of the sales tax base last year. The General Assembly expanded it to sales tax to be charged on, you know, a number of new services. And their intention was to raise $84.8 million. That would go to 79 smaller, less wealthy counties. But to get to that, the expansion only generated $60,000 to $10,000 million, and the state kicked in $17.6. What we are seeing is the state is not repeating that appropriation. So if they cut their $17.6 million appropriation, we will feel the immediate effect of $600,000. We will lose that in the '17 budget. We're watching these. We just don't know. It's very hard to tell, but we don't think they'll let the smaller counties lose any Any questions about those? They're complicated bills, but we're just... This is not a right bill for us.
Yeah, I have one. I have one, I'm sorry. But so I'm trying to wrap my head around what's going on in the county, which is very, very positive as far as the sales tax that we're collecting. Could you speak to that a little bit, you know, if we're impacted by a sales tax of a million, three or four, what you just said? But can you just speak to the fact that, you know, there's an increase in sales tax in the county and for a lot of reasons?
We are. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We do have an increase in our sales tax this year. Find it on the sheet, I'm sorry. Find it on the sheet, I'm sorry. Our sales tax increase for this year is about $1.5 million. And we, we do have good growth, good real growth economy at the moment, and people shopping. If 846 passes, given the economy, we probably just won't have growth next year. Probably be two years of kind of just status quo, just based on the projections that we're doing right now if the growth continues this way. The $600,000 isn't immediate yet, and that is real cost. That would be something we have to reduce. The $600,000 hits, yes, the 17 budget that we're asking you to turn up later this month. There's another Senate bill I want to talk to you about, and that's Senate 888. But I want to start by talking about what that bill is attempting to change. In 1983, Article 39 sales tax was passed by the state of North Carolina. It's 1% sales tax, and it was available to every county. But in Buckham County, half of that, 1/2%, was restricted to school capital for K-12. At that point in time, we were one of the dirty dozen in the nation in terms of the status of our school system. So we've accomplished a lot of really good things with this fund. And I know to everyone of us, to you as commissioners, to us as staff, to both school board systems, every child is equal and needs, needs to have good facilities. And I think that some of this bill attempts to do that. Here's some of the things that we've accomplished with this. A couple of new high schools, Owen and Inca. Three new middle schools, Valley, Tang Creek, and Irwin. Four new intermediate schools, North Wendy Ridge, Prince, Evelyn, and Inca. So three new elementary schools, Sand Hill, Davis Creek, and Colony. And then we've had some administrative offices. We've done a lot with our football fields. And we've done a tremendous amount of major maintenance that was just too long to list. But significant, significant improvements in our school system. In the city schools, we've done something with the administrative office. It was an old school building that we repurposed. We've done a lot of, renovated class in a number of years ago. And there've been some renovations done at Asheville High and also a football field. We'll tell you, Isaac Dixon, Asheville Middle is our improvements, but those are improvements that are being paid currently out of our general fund. It's $5 million a year. So if you look at the combination, just the business of the screen tells. We've done a lot with Article 39. But the fact that we do have to deal with is that the ADM requirement does not provide enough funding to make some of the improvements we need to make in the Asheville City School System. So we've had to pay to Alagar General Fund to replace the middle school and Isaac Dixon. And we do pay currently $5 million now out of the general fund for that debt service. What is Senate Bill? 888 proposes to do is make three basic changes. And I want to emphasize this because this is very important to both of our Dr. Baldwin's. This only impacts Article 39 sales tax. It does not impact 40, 42 lottery proceeds. It doesn't impact anything else that's driven by ADM, just Article 39. It's very important that we remember that. It's very important that we make sure that that's the way the bill stays. And I think they're very, they will be receptive to us if we talk to local delegation. The changes include that the School Capital Fund Commission, which is an advisory commission that would vet the projects and prioritize them accordingly, would now be appointed by, one would be appointed by Buckham County Schools, one would be appointed by Asheville City Schools, two would be appointed by Buckham County, and those four would then appoint the field. It is an advisory board to this commission, to this, to this Board of Commissioners. And the current board, which has not been operational for years, but will have to be reinstated regardless now, is not appointed exactly the same way. The second change in this legislation would be that capital projects are defined as those expenses over $100,000 versus those over $50,000. $50,000 was a lot of home money in 1983 than it is today. And the ADM split is eliminated. But I want to show you, we worked with both school systems to find out what are their next needs over the next nine or 10 years. And, oh, Dr. Baldwin, I can't see this either. Hold this a little closer. If you look, based on the requests that have been made, which total $125 million over the next 10 years when you combine the two school systems' needs, you can see that we issue the debt one year and start paying debt the second year. So when you total those up, you can tell what the needs are at $125 million. And you can see the breakdown on this table chart. We usually plan one year and do a adopter reimbursement resolution. Then we borrow the next year, and the debt starts paying in the third year. But here's the revenue stream, and I'm sorry that these are so small. I could not find a way to make them larger. But if you look at starting in the current year, the revenue coming into the fund is in that first, first column. The debt payment that now includes the $125 million they submitted to us for projects that are still in the pipeline, they have not started yet, would include like the community school, excuse me, that would include the changes to Asheville High, and that would include shifting middle school and Isaac Dixon into this fund. So as you can see, the projects that they've submitted are all very, I'm so sorry, are all very manageable under this new legislation. And at the ninth and 10th year, we have the capacity to issue another $100 million worth of debt if we needed to. So if there's an emergency comes up, there is tremendous capacity in this fund as redefined in this bill. And we wanted to make sure that we heard from both schools to say, give us your list. Everything you think you can need, or give us a dollar. And county schools gave us the dollar amounts for a number of years out, and their board will be approving these projects in the very near future. But as you can see, we can do that $125 million of work. We can move the two school system, the two schools, and meet the needs and still have bright capacity in this fund under Senate 888. I do have to tell you, there's a person who has to bring all these things together in your county manager. This is, this is a bill that works, I think, for both school systems and for Buckham County. It gives us capacity, tremendous capacity. I can sit here and say that by the end of the period you're looking here, we can have issued $225 million worth of debt and still have ability to manage a, an emergency. Thank you. I've talked way too much last year, as it does. And also then gives you capacity in the general fund to make some changes or to do some other things that you might like to do in response to other requests for other issues. Happy to answer any questions you have about that. This is not one we get to decide locally, but I also think it's one that you get to influence from here with your conversations with the local delegation. It's a local bill. It's not a, doesn't impact any county but Buckham. And when you look at serving all the kids and trying to serve them equally and give them all the nice facilities without hurting anybody, I think this does that. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have about it.
When do you think we'll know on the, on the bills, actually?
I think, to move this one, I think there's going to be, maybe some phone calls maybe. And I think when you make those phone calls, it'll probably start voting relatively quick.
So can you go over, like, the turbo, the $125, $125 million?
If you look in the first subcolumns on the left-hand side of the sheet, we have included in that, the first column there, the debt issue, and those are based strictly on what's been submitted to us by city and county schools and projects and money that they see themselves needing in each of those years. The second column is there just simply to let you know we, how the planning process works. Tell us about it. We borrow, then we pay. So expenditures are almost a little, a year later. So that includes $125 million worth of projects that have been requested by city and county schools over the coming nine to 10 years.
Nine to 10 years.
And as you can see, we still are positive cash flow position inside that fund. And by the time you get to that ninth or 10th year, when you look at the capacity, we did not run it on down because you start issuing debt 10 years out, you've got, the spreadsheet gets longer. But you do have the capacity at that point in time. We were particularly looking at 26. You start having the capacity to issue significant amount of additional debt if you come up with another $100 million worth of need.
And so, did I hear right? So the Asheville Middle and Isaac Dixon is $5 million a year now in debt service?
You did hear right, yes, ma'am.
And so could that be transferred over to this?
We have already moved, we've already reflected that.
In addition, I think I want to understand on Isaac Dixon now, wasn't it? Is out of our funds, and that's the way we're paying it back instead of utilizing this other money.
And under the current legislation, we don't have access to this fund for those schools. Under the new legislation, we would.
And the new legislation and the structure or administration of it would, it would create additional flexibility in terms of meeting some of the other priorities we have in terms of, I mean, it could be a lot of different things, but obviously one of the ones that was talked about tonight was increasing compensation, local compensation for public school teachers, which is, you know, we're looking at it for this year and the next couple of years, but also just as a long-term basis. We've got important decisions to make this year, next year. But it's not an issue that's going to go away. It's going to be an issue that's going to be an important priority to, for us, you know, for years to come. And this would enable us to potentially have more resources to invest towards that goal, short-term and long-term.
Short-term and, we have plenty of money for capital. $5 million becomes capacity for other things that you might need for programming or something in the general fund. And you do have a number of requests in front of you.
One more question on that. Some of this money, could we actually turn around and take, say, 1%, which is like 2.8 billion of it, and reduce basically the property tax for the people?
I think because you would have capacity for $5 million, I think it's up to the seven of you how you decide to use those. It can be both in reduced costs and increased or other, other demands, to meet other demands. So that's really up to what would be the seven of you.
Well, I mean, it's, we have demands, but then we have demands too for the people as well.
So I don't, I don't have any questions about it right now, but just, I mean, just an observation. I mean, I really appreciate the, the analysis on this. I know that this has just happened pretty quickly. So for the county and the school board, I mean, everyone's going to be getting eyes on this pretty quickly to sort of understand what it would mean. And so I appreciate the, the initial analysis of it, and I just hope that over the coming days, we can all kind of continue the conversation around what it would mean for each of the different school units. The county is a funder of both. And there's always trade-offs on any kind of legislation like this. So understanding those trade-offs and hopefully, to the extent possible, figuring out ways that we can come together to meet, you know, the multiple priorities that we've been talking about tonight in terms of taking care of the facilities, looking at keeping and retaining our best teachers years to come, and, and, you know, to what extent this would be helpful or if there's any downsides to it, understanding that too. So just thanks for the initial analysis because I know it's all come out pretty quickly. And the window, for us to potentially weigh in on it is not a big window, so it's an important time to really focus on.
That would be a very narrow window.
It is a narrow window.
I think it was narrow.
Narrow, yes.
I do want to say, we keep this, we have for years, DIAM, the process kept what we call the school capital model, so that we know exactly what flows through the money. This is conservative. We think that the results are actually better, but we prefer to be conservative going in. So I think that this is consistent with the model that those school systems have used for a long time.
Have you, and this is probably precipitous because we don't know too much. Have you given any thought or figured what it would be if not only were the teachers' pay increased, but made that the same amount for all Buckham County employees?
We have thought some about that, the staff. We will put some numbers together, and as Dr. Baldwin and I meet and talk about that, and a basing plan, look at a similar one for county. And I think there's a lot of options that, other than maybe just the straightforward ones that have been used in the past. I think there's several options that really kind of came up as others in the people talk. So I think we'd more than be able to bring you back a plan before adoption on the 21st.
I think the thing that I have the hardest time wrestling with is so many teachers assistants and non-certified not making a living wage in our county.
I did hear that pretty loudly clear as I, as I listened to the discussion. So thank you for the guidance.
And Dr. Green, I would ask that you, I know you've had conversations. Please continue. I think it's real important. We have a lot of school board members, a lot of superintendents, a lot of folks that are very anxious about A-Day Day, and we want to make sure that we share everything. And I know you do this, and I'm telling you, I'm preaching to the choir, I know that. I do think it's important because this is, this is a change, and everybody needs to understand what it might mean based on this very figure that you're doing here. I think that's real important for everybody to see that and understand what that says.
I would be happy to continue in this conversation. And we'll reemphasize one more time, this is Article 39. Because 40 and 42 are very critical to it and for other reasons. It doesn't, it does not touch those.
Any other questions or comments about any of the topics that Dr. Green's touched on?
I want to take just a moment to say, we took up the public hearing set with this budget at 4:30 on June 7. Do want to recognize the enterprise handling because of the family emergency that Autumn Logues and Nat Evans want to stand, and they do a lot of work for us. And we've got directors and staff, I see several of them in the room, Jim, Sherry, and I'm here. A lot of people make this budget possible. I wouldn't just stand here and say, say the things about it and try to bring it together, but there's a lot of fundamental work starts earlier than November to, we, Captain Prince, come in and help us. A lot of work. Thank you very much.
I think we take a week or two off and start next year, but it's not much more than that.
Very good gets it done until it's time to start again.
We appreciate it. Thank you. Any other questions about the budget or any other great presentations we've heard today? We're looking at different things here. One thing that she brought forward was nonprofits. And I was looking at nonprofits, I'm looking, as she went down the list, she got down to our firing range, our indoor firing range. We spent $4 million for an indoor firing range, and it's going to cost $430,000 a year in rent. David, you know, a while back, it's, I'd like to, if we could, I know people like the arts. I would honestly like to go back to what I've done a while back. I would like to see if we could, you know, here's a half million dollars that, if we had that half million dollars to go with the state's half million dollars, we could have had an outdoor gun range without having to worry about $430,000 of electable bill and maintenance of the place that the people of Buckham County could utilize in other places. They, they pay a fee to come. This is something that the people of Buckham County can't utilize here. I was, as the people came in and wanted to borrow $50,000 to put signage up that was leaving, or still, I'd like to borrow it at $500,000. It's going to be set aside and put national funds for the $500,000 from the state and open a separate public gun range because they've done, already done the drills. And they did hit rock, and the state was going to put it in for $500,000. I hate to ask for money, but if we want to spend money like this, I would like the public to have a place to, to go. There are people like art, those people that still like to shoot guns. And so, if we can't move some of this nonprofit money around, I mean, if we're going to give somebody $350,000 just to keep the lifetime of the bill, let's, let's try to help somebody that we can put people to work, and it will fund itself. Any other comments? Thanks for mine.
Yeah, I just wanted to say something to Commissioner Friar's comment. If, if, that would help us with our deputies and our long guns, you know. If that would help us with our deputies and our long-term, you know, I mean, we don't have facility for long-term. So anything that we can do to help our deputies in that department, you know, I would certainly be looking at, so.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments at this point? All right, well, our next step is we will have a public comment on the whole budget. That'll be next week, that's it. Yep, next week. And then two weeks, three weeks from tonight, we'll vote on the final budget. Okay, any other matters to come for us today?
Yes, the airport.
Airport, thank you, thank you. That's right. Let's talk about the resolution authorizing the county manager to execute grant agreements for the Asheville Regional Airport Fund.
This is a proposal for a grant from FAA for $12.2 million. And $11 million of that would be used for the next phase of the airfield redevelopment. And that includes demolition, grading, drainage, installation of the navigation aids for the permanent runway. As you know, the runway that's being built will be the permanent runway of the current runway, the taxiway. It also includes funding for 1,500 gallon aircraft rescue and fire trucks. And it's all federal money coming to us. And I think it's as simple as applying, and the check will come.
So this is, this is just a way to tap into, the federal is in charge of the federal aviation for obvious reasons, and this is a way to tap into the money that they've already kind of linked and said you probably may get it now.
Well, overall, when you have projects like this that they've approved, they'll do about 95% funding, which has to go through the application process and of course, the financial management of it. But this is the application process, and we anticipate that it's, we will get this grant.
Any questions or comments? Wonderful, they have a wonderful airport, and want to make a normal one, that's great.
Any questions?
I'm in, Commissioner, to approve.
All right, there's been a motion by Commissioner, by Vice Chair, and a second by Commissioner Frost on this proposal. And I think Commissioner Veltzer certainly wanted to hear about it and was very supportive of it, I understand. So any other comments? Four. All right. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Mr. Friar's stepdad is prepared to see what no. All right, any other matters coming forward?
I've got a point of personal privilege.
Yes, sir.
I just want to say that on May the 20th, I had an opportunity to, on behalf of the chairman and other folks on the board, to go and make a presentation, proclamation on behalf of the county, naming the Lester Crossing for Sergeant Jeff Hewitt. And it's a great turnout. And also had an opportunity to tour a part of it. But I just want to take this opportunity to thank, I know he was here already, Sheriff Van Duncan, all of our deputies, and that family. It's just such a heartfelt time. But they, you know, we talked about a lot of different people within the county, that the employee function today and what they do and how hard they work. And, you know, these folks run into danger when we run away from it. But I just want to thank the board for doing that. And it's just a great opportunity to be there. And I want to thank all those, and our deputies and the leaders in there.
Thank you for representing us all, David. Any other matters coming forward tonight? Hearing none, I'll do the announcements. On June 7th, our regular meeting will be held in this building at 4:30, 200 Cod Street, Room 326. The meeting will include the public hearing on the budget, and we will have, look forward to hearing from folks about any questions or comments on that. Any other business to come before the board tonight? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. A motion by Commissioner Veltzer, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Friar, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. We are adjourned by 5:00. But thank you for being here tonight.